...decision in one case that somehow will impact the other.
Right.
That's my concern. I guess one other possibility is once we get all the hearing officers awards together is perhaps listen to another hearing officer for reconciliation or something. I'm just thinking out loud here, but I am concerned about the board giving inconsistent directions to the party.
Then Mr. Harris Dawson will not be able to attend. So any items that are approved will be a recommendation of the chair. I don't know that we need to call the roll since I am present and we don't have a forum. But we will hear items one through 10. This is a special meeting, so there's no general public comment. This is just comment on the items. And any comments that are not on the items, I'm giving an advance warning. We will move on to the next caller. So just so we can be sure that if anyone doesn't have an agenda in front of them, they will know the topics, grab a pen and paper, and I'll tell you what they are. Item number one is in short reviewing the position of animal control technician. Item number two is regarding LA spay and neuter annual promotion. Item number three is regarding the citywide volunteer program. Item number four is about the department's orange list. Item five is regarding funding for cat program, spay and neuter, and the city-owned shelters in general. Item six is the animal cruelty task force. Item seven is the targeted local hire and utilization of it at Department of Animal Services. Item number eight is cats and small animals at Department of Animal Services. Nine is joint labor management committee utilization. And number 10 is regular exercise and enrichment of dogs. And item 11 will need to be continued. And so that should be heard presumably at our next meeting. There is a question of noticing on that item. So we will begin the public hearing once again just on the items. And if you're off topic, not speaking to any of the items, we will go to the next caller. I will take a minimum of an hour of testimony. May decide to increase that, but this is just a regular hearing. And so we will treat public comment as we would in any other regular hearing and provide a specific amount of time. All right, so if we could begin hearing from our public. And you'll get two minutes to speak on combined all the agenda items. Please identify which item you're speaking on as you give testimony.
And Mr. Chair, would you like the clerk to read out the call-in instructions?
Yes, please.
Members of the public who'd like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda, should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 161-602-6414. And then press the pound key. Press pound key again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
All right, if we could begin.
Okay, would the caller with the last four digits 5404, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Can you hear me?
Yep, you can go ahead.
Awesome. I'd like to speak on items two, three, and five, please.
Okay, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
First, I'd like to say it's interesting that you're trying to hold people to Brown Act rules on what to speak about when this meeting's not in compliance with Brown Act. But anyway, getting to number two. What's interesting about the spay and neuter law is that back when the budget recommendations came out in May, there wasn't any call for extra spay and neuter despite the fact that we know that this is a program that pays for itself. When we're thinking about animal care, when we're thinking about fiscal responsibility, spay and neuter is one of the easiest investments a city can make. And it shouldn't take public outrage, public outcry, multiple LA Times stories to invest in something like this. Bay and neuter's good. What I don't understand is why the city hasn't taken it seriously until now. Then we're going to go to number three. Were you looking at handling the process for applications to volunteers and disciplinary procedures? So why should we trust the city to handle that at this point? It's gotten to the point, I think I saw an email where volunteers were called irritants by someone in Mr. Coret's office. You guys have made it to the point that this city, there's only two ways that you get hurt. You either have to yell and get it into the press, or you've got to be super connected and maybe give an illegal max out donation like Sean Bayless. That's the two ways. People have been telling you guys for years that the volunteer situation at animal services is messed up. And I don't know why we think that the city is suddenly going to be handling people's First Amendment rights appropriately all of a sudden. All right, then we get to number five, and this is a real fun one. $3 million from the reserve fund. Now, I'm not saying that the animals don't need it. I think they do. But the reserve fund is for emergencies, and I know that you know that.
I'm sorry, your comments are expired.
Would the caller with the last four digits 7543, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Yes, all available agenda items, please.
Okay, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Yes. Hi, good morning, Mr. Coret and fellow activists and council members. I'd like to say that I have written public comments on the majority of the items.
Can you please state your name?
My name?
Yes.
Yes, Lionel Modis, present. And I just want to say that I hope you had the chance to read our public comments in the council file management system because I have expressed my concerns and support of animal welfare and animal safety. And I do believe that if we incentivize people to adopt these poor animals by giving fee waivers and free services, I'm sure that many more people will be willing to adopt these animals who need a loving home and care and compassion. That concludes my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would the caller with the last four digits 5380, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
I'd like to speak on all items.
And your name?
Fuck you is my name.
Okay, thank you. You'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Yeah, first off, like, why is this being hidden in the sparse of a meeting so nobody will hear our comments? Animal Services has needed proper funding for years, and I'm a little bit confused about why this hasn't happened until now. Like, why all of a sudden, when Paul's up for an election, there's a flurry of 11 motions to properly fund things? Like, why has it been ignored until there was an LA Times article? The spay and neuter program definitely needs money. The reserve fund isn't where that money should be coming from. The Animal Control Task Force definitely should be happening, but it doesn't need additional funding. LAPD is full of shit. They cut the services that they knew would pull at people's heartstrings. They cut animal services, they cut elder abuse, they cut sex crimes because they thought people would be outraged and be like, no, don't defund the police, give them more money. We're not fooled by the bullshit. Like, I'm a little bit confused also, though. This isn't just Paul Coret's fault, this is also Animal Services's fault. I'm a little bit confused why they haven't been asking for more money for years. Looking in the Blue Book, the White Book, all of the budget memos, like, it's perplexing to me why funding has remained at the level that it is. And it's just, you shouldn't be hitting the reserve fund for this. It should have been thought about and planned out and done during the budget process. Yes, all of this needs money. And yes, it's an emergency, but like, poor planning and Paul needing to get more votes isn't an emergency that you hit the reserve fund for. Like, what are you guys doing? And why is this sparse of a meeting even fucking happening except for to keep us from making public comments at a general city council meeting where it's going to be more embarrassing because more people are going to hear it? Like, what are you even doing, Paul? We all see you. We all know what you're doing.
Off topic.
Just to cover tracks for the election. I'm sorry?
You're off topic. You're done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would the caller with the last four digits 3784, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on? Would the caller with the last four digits 3784?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
All right, Andrew Graebner, all items.
Okay, you'll have two minutes. You can go ahead.
All right, so first of all, I don't think Gills, DeWey, and Cohen Daley have resigned yet, so no resignations, no meeting. This is basically just a campaign rally for Paul Coret. Yes, it is. I'm going to talk about the items.
Next speaker, please.
Would the caller with the last four digits 3282, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, this is Claudio Kuznier. I'd like to speak on agenda item number three and number 10.
Okay, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the volunteer application. The volunteer application is written so that volunteers can be fired for any reason. And I'm going to actually read to you what it states. Give me one second. Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. Anyway, the application says that you can be fired for anything you write or say, any communication verbal that you can write or say, basically saying that I support a certain candidate or any office that I can be terminated. If I'm Jewish and my surname is Cohen, I can be fired, okay? At any point, basically limits any communication written or verbal that any volunteer says, okay, that we can be fired during the application process or any time thereafter. Okay, this is not fair, okay? With everything that's going on right now in the city, to have such a clause in the application process is not only illegal, anybody who signed it, signed an illegal application, okay? You should not be able to discriminate against people because they write their name and they don't like that your name is Cohen, okay? And all of a sudden, this guy, when people are denied their applications, they are not given a reason why they're denied their applications. So we have no idea whether, why they're rejecting our applications. As far as discipline goes, when Larry Gross knows somebody, like the two volunteers that
Thank you for your comments. Your time is now expired. Would the caller with the last four digits 5960, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Yes, hello, my name is Michelle Cornelius, and I would like to speak on item five, two, and three.
Okay, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Okay. Motion 22-1180, the language in the motion is correct because it says the city has seven animal shelters when you actually have eight. Prop F was passed by the 2000 bill to expand and renovate eight animal shelters in the Prop F voter guide. The city made three promises it hasn't kept. They said they needed to add more shelters to improve response time. One of those added shelters was Northeast Valley, yet offices are not being deployed from there, so response time does not improve for those residents. The city said it needed the number of dog kennels to be expanded to 1,200 to be safe and humane. If animal services had access to all 1,200 kennels, the overcrowding problem would not be nearly as severe as it has been for the last several months. While city shelters are overcrowded, Best Friends, which operates Northeast, has only pulled 31 dogs in the first eight months of this year, so kennels must be sitting empty at that facility. The voter guide also knows that the city would need to allocate more funding to staff these new facilities, yet that hasn't happened. It's been over 20 years. And we are still being told that you can't find three to four million dollars out of a budget of 11.7 billion to staff and operate the Northeast Valley Shelter. I'm 22-1175, getting more dogs and cats fixed is one of the most important things the city can do to help with shelter overcrowding. A lot of people probably got dogs from breeders during the pandemic, and many of them probably never fixed. This report should be asked the department for the number of intact animals coming into the shelter since 2019, or to see if the problem is getting worse, but it remains the same. You should also consider raising the amount of the discount voucher. It's currently under $100, but I have heard of that charging around 600 depending on the size and medical condition of the animal. It's hard to get compliance with the law. That costs us that much money. 22-1176, centralized the volunteer application process in giving third parties oversight over disciplinary procedures is an improvement over the current system. There should be clear guidelines for disciplinary procedures, which are known to all volunteers, and the appeal process should not be handled internally by animal services. The current animal, the current volunteer application asks if there is inappropriate or irrelevant questions, like asking applicants to describe
Thank you for your comments. Your time is now expired. Would the caller with the last four digits 9890, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on? Once again, would the caller with the last four digits 9890, please press star six to unmute yourself, and then state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, good morning. My name is Guanalando Brawna, and I would love to speak on each topic, but we don't have the time for that. And as you can tell, you're taking away the voice, not from this person.
Okay, you'll have, ma'am, you'll have two minutes to speak on all the items, and you can begin.
Back to Task Force for Animal Cruelty. And please, you know, consider looking into the volunteers program because a lot of people want to help and just stand by us and help us do that. It would be a better look for you anyway. And just animal cruelty and the small animals, please. They're suffering. These animals need out, they need to be exercising, they need to be taken care of. It's just simpleness of kindness, and there's money for all of that. And, you know, like I said, there's just not enough time, and you just want to take away our voices. So do what makes you happy, I guess, because that's all you consider. That's all you want, right, is to win, to do what you want? Like, that sucks.
Thank you, Ross.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the caller with the last four digits 4411, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hello, this is Carolyn Elia. I'd like to speak on item 221176, which builds into the dog walking regularly exercised shelter animals, 221187. How many minutes do I have?
Is that two items you'd like to speak on?
Correct.
Yeah, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Okay. I was wondering if the city attorney has fully reviewed the application process and the termination and discipline process for the volunteers. It doesn't even match what the application process or discipline process is for the staff. The volunteer process just somehow seems more stringent and more silencing the opinions, not actually opinions, but the views that the volunteers see on the ground. They're being silenced. And I'm not sure if this is legal, and you may want to look into that before the city gets sued. The volunteers that you quickly terminate for no valid reasons usually are the ones who exercise the dogs. So you have instructions on regularly exercised shelter animals. You need volunteers for that. So this goes back into the previous point of making sure you retain volunteers. Has anyone bothered looking at the longevity of volunteers at each shelter? Because the management bloats in the numbers and says, we have an army of XYZ thousands of volunteers. But those volunteers only come in to do some paperwork or some dusting of the volunteer office, and they're considered volunteers that are not actually hands-on helping animals. An outside party needs to take a look at the process. And obviously, it can't be Paul Coret's because he has canceled more than half of the PA meetings. And we're putting on this political charade over here now because it's close to election. That's okay. Who can be off usually do. You usually do, Paul. This is par of the course.
Okay, would the caller with the last four digits 4208, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, it's Rob Quon. I'd like to speak on all items.
Okay, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
So I'm going to speak on topic. The original LA Times story on inhumane conditions at our animal shelters dropped on July 14. So how is it that Paul Coret's waited two and a half months to even visit a shelter?
You're off topic. Thank you.
How was I off topic?
You're not speaking on any agenda items.
The agenda items are about shelters, and I'm speaking right now about how you wait.
Would the caller with the last four digits 3543, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Good morning. My name's Tom Keesh. I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes.
So I want to speak on, I think it's two and three. I'm not feeling that great today, so excuse my voice. It's hard to make comments on things before I hear them, but I am a volunteer at North Central. I put in almost 1,000 hours on the record this year, probably 5,000 altogether. Maybe I'm exaggerating by a little bit. I'm a level three dog walker, and I'm arguably one of the most visual volunteers that LAAS has. I'm a little surprised that no one has reached out to discuss anything about the volunteer program with volunteers. That's just beyond comprehension to me. There's not a corporation in the world that wouldn't bring in the people that are affected by it. As far as the ACTs go, I don't know what you guys are going to be talking about, but there's so many really great ones that are getting burned out because there's so many really bad ones that aren't doing the work. And if you take the time to look at the dog notes that was copied from a program that we started at North Central, that now is an official program with LAAS, you'll see that notes are really great with volunteers and really bad with staff. And LAAS just likes the point of dogs and saying how bad those dogs are. Instead of looking at the greater problem of maybe we need to look at the program, the ACT program, and figure out what the volunteers are doing right, and maybe have the volunteers help the staff have better relationships with the animals. A lot of those animals are very adversarial with the staff because the staff is very much like, get it done, get it in, get it out, bang it down, bang it, close it up.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Your time's now expired. Would the caller with the last four digits 4650, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, this is Paula Chen. I was a former volunteer with Sally. I'd like to speak on a few of the motions.
Okay, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Okay, perfect. One has to do with the promotion of spay and neuter. So I don't know if the city is aware, but it is incredibly difficult right now to get into any of the spay and neuter clinics that are low cost for community cats, pet cats, and pet dogs. So that is something that the city has to come up with. Rather than just providing vouchers, there has to be some sort of contracting for low-cost spay and neuter. Second of all, it has to do with the establishing a neutral program for volunteering termination and program review. I do want to point out the importance of having a neutral, non-city-related personnel in those boards because currently, it doesn't, there is no way for volunteers to, there is no way for volunteers to turn to for any kind of resolution. Right now, LA Animal Services does what it does. There is no oversight. There is no accountability. And I also want to point out the, there was a wording on 22-1184, ensuring the best possible treatment of cats, rabbits, and all other small animals. I want to point out that that language is extremely troublesome and vague. How do you measure what is best possible? There are specific processes and policies that LA Animal Services are held to where they are required, there are laws that govern this, that animals are required to be treated humanely, the basic care of clean kennels, cages, water, and food, and as well as socialization and exercise. Those are the basic standard of care. So best possible care, those wording is not good enough. And lastly, I want to comment on the orange alerts. Currently, there are about less than 30 rescues that are on the orange alert email list that have signed up to be part of this emergency response program.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is now expired. Would the caller with the last four digits 0551, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, good morning. My name is Kathy Serkis, and I'd like to speak on item number three and number 10. Excuse me, I have bad allergies today.
No problem, ma'am. You'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Okay, great. So item number three, regarding the volunteer programs and the possibility of creating a centralized system. You know, at first glance, like, some of the other callers alluded to this, that if you look at the application for a volunteer, LA Animal Services, which I encourage everybody in this committee to do, and all the council members, look at that application and compare and contrast it to the application for an employee. It's like 10 times as long. It's so restrictive. It's just clamping down on every right you have, including your First Amendment right to freedom of speech. I mean, you think you were applying to become, to work for the FBI or the CIA with that volunteer application. So I strongly encourage you to look at that and look at the handbook for employee, I mean, for a volunteer and compare and contrast that to a handbook for an employee, if it even exists. Item number 10, plan to make sure dogs get out on a regular basis. You know, they boast about 2,000-plus volunteers, but, you know, these could be people that just come in and sign up, you know, an hour here and there during the month. How many, start to break down the length of time the volunteers have been there, and what are their levels? There's three levels, one, two, and three. I was a level three volunteer before I was fired for the most silly reason. But anyway, level three volunteers are the only ones who can take out dogs. So how many level three volunteers do you have out of all this 2,000-plus volunteers that they boast about? Because you ain't getting all the dogs that much. You have a lot of level threes. And just in general, you know, Paul has been at a city hall meeting that he has no ability to, basically his quote was
Thank you for your comments. Your time is now expired. Would the caller with the last four digits 7186, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, this is a real quick technical thing. Some of your mutes, your mics aren't unmuted so we can hear you laughing and breathing and talking. Also, silencing anyone who disagrees with you is pretty fucked up. Bye.
Would the caller with the last four digits 6281? Would the caller with the last four digits, six, two, eight, one, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, my name is Gail Raff and I am an animal person on the streets of Los Angeles doing the work of LA Animal Services. Um, I'd like to speak to all items because I don't know what numbers you're pertaining to because your program is so disarrayed.
Okay, we'll, we'll give you a maximum two minutes and you can start.
Thank you, I won't need that much. Stay and neuter, it's a law, they need to enforce it, whether they get their money or not, it doesn't matter, LA Animal Services does not enforce it, making it the prob, the problem and the responsibility of people on the streets. The other thing is volunteer program, it's a joke. As a fired volunteer or suspended volunteer, it should not be in the hands of anybody in LA animal, in LA city supervising it because the general manager is now head of personnel. This needs to be into a different organization or a different group that can look over everything that's happening to the volunteers. LA Animal Services is a joke, this meeting is a joke because we can never get anything done, it's been known years and years and years what's been going on and now, all of a sudden, you can't even get a quorum to pass anything. The joke, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the caller with the last four digits, eight, eight, five, eight, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, good morning, my name is Nancy Uteback.
Okay, and which items would you like to speak on?
I would like to speak on item two, three and ten.
Okay, you'll have, uh, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Thank you, yeah, I think they all are, um, pretty much deal with the same thing, which is the big problem, is there are too many animals at our shelters. And so the annual, uh, that number two, it's an annual program, I think it needs to be more than an annual program, it needs to be continuing and ongoing and free and enforced because we have too many animals. And then on, uh, item number three, the volunteer program, ever since the expose, it seems to be like it's harder to become a volunteer. I was a volunteer for six years, I got my pen delivered to me while I was off from a bite incident and I was told I could reinst, get reinstated if I started as a new volunteer and my, my application was denied. And it hurts me that I can't, and nobody would respond to any of my emails or texts, the animals are dying inside our shelters right now. At Harbor, we have over a hundred and forty animals and they are caged together and they are getting vicious because nobody can get them out. We have a skeleton crew that work diligently for these animals, but there's like seven or eight volunteers that go in that are able to do it and it's heartbreaking. And so that ties in with number ten, the regular exercise. Until these things change, these dogs will never, and animals, bunnies, all the animals, cats, we need to change this. And if nobody's gonna talk about humanely, humanely euthanizing because these animals are not getting out, I don't wanna do that, nobody wants to, we need to get the volunteers back in, we need to get something, Juan wasn't, Juan Ramirez will not answer me, nobody answers me, when I got bit, nobody asked how I was, Carolyn, it's just not right, so...
Thank you for your comment, your time is now expired. Would the caller with the last four digits, seven, three, five, zero, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
It would be off-topic for me to bring up the fact that Paul Coretts has hundreds of thousands of behest payments he never filed.
Off-topic, next caller, please. Would the caller with the last four digits, two, four, seven, eight, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Michelle Kelly here, I've probably put in more total volunteers than any other volunteer at LA Animal Services, but I'm not here to talk about volunteer issues. I'd like, like to talk about items two and eight.
Okay, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
I was a staunch supporter of spay and neuter, I would love to see the spay and neuter laws promoted more, so thank you for putting that on the agenda. As a corollary, the funding for spay and neuter vouchers does not adequately cover the cost of spay and neuter for rabbits and that amount needs to be increased, a hundred and twenty-five dollars does not cover the cost to the veterinarian unless they are a nonprofit, they are going to have trouble participating. And I'd also like to see male guinea pigs included in the spay and neuter program because we are seeing an increase of guinea pigs in the shelters statewide and we're in the same situation that we were with rabbits twenty years ago, so let's look at this now rather than react after we reach the point where we can no longer save all the guinea pigs. Moving along to item number eight, thank you for your care for the cats and small mammals such as rabbits, guinea pigs and hamsters in our shelters and the report correctly states that the care of these animals is heavily dependent on volunteers because staff really truly do not have time to properly care for these species. For example, daily exercise out of the cage is not enrichment, it's a necessity. So I see now with the hiring of all these new ACPs that we have a rare opportunity at this time to encourage staff and volunteers to work together and get a significant percentage of staff and volunteers properly trained on the care of these exotic species, so this is our chance to move forward with a positive change. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, if there are any other callers who wish to speak, please press star nine in order to raise your hand. Once again, there are any other callers who wish to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand. Would the caller with the last four digits, nine, zero, eight, two, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Brenda, I'm from Woodland Hills, I'd like to speak on, it, it's just ten minutes that I get, sir?
Uh, you'll get two minutes, uh, to speak on multiple items.
Um, then I'd like to speak on item three and five.
Okay, um, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Well, sir, I originally was calling in, I have a friend who is a regular volunteer at the Chatsworth Animal Shelter, the West Valley one, and, and we, we, we were talking extensively about the conditions in the shelters and the way that the volunteers are, are treated and they, they asked me to call in and speak about it because frankly, they're afraid of retaliation. And I, and it, you know, I didn't mean to gaslight my friend, but I kinda feel like maybe I did because I didn't believe it, but after this meeting, I understand it, it's the culture that is broken here. Now, I may not be a lawyer, but I do know how to do a quick Google, and I, the Brown Act does say that you cannot prevent the public from criticizing the acts or omission of the legislative body, that's been black and white in the Cal Code, sir. And the way this meeting has been conducted is shameful, you should be ashamed, because there have been people that have been trying to talk to you about how these meetings have been, about how the shelters have been...
You're off-topic also, sorry.
I'm not off-topic, I'm talking about the ability for volunteers to speak, to...
Would the caller with the last four digits, zero, seven, eight, seven, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Uh, Jeff Mousner, speaking in my individual capacity. Uh, I support all eleven items on the agenda, I'll start with number three and then move to number two and the others.
Okay, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
I strongly, this is number three, I strongly support removing the ability to suspend, terminate and discipline volunteers from the Animal Services Department. The department has demonstrated a complete inability to discipline volunteers in a fair and constitutional manner. It has used its ability to suspend, terminate and discipline volunteers in an attempt to cover up conditions at the city animal shelters and cover up mismanagement by the department. Trivial, frivolous and sometimes false pretext are cooked up in order to threaten, suspend and terminate volunteers who have spoken with the press or posted on social media regarding shelter conditions. Violations of the US and California constitutions by the Director of Volunteer Programs, General Managers and others at DAS in their dealings with volunteers have resulted in a cease and desist letter being sent to city officials explaining that if these constitutional violations do not stop, a lawsuit will be filed against appropriate officials, including under forty-two USC Section nineteen eighty-three, the federal civil rights law. The cease and desist letter is in public comment in the council file. What kind of animal services department...
Thank you for your comments, uh, your time is now expired. Would the caller with the last four digits, five, six, zero, five, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll speak on items, uh, uh, one, six, seven, eight, nine and ten, I'll just say, I'm speaking on all items.
Okay, uh, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
All right, I just wanna point out that the vast majority of these motions are report backs, do you have any plan at all to follow up on the, what happens if you're out of office in under thirty days and the report back on animal care technicians or the report back on, you know, improving conditions for small animals? How, how are you gonna follow up on that? And the second question related to following up on things is how are you going to trust the program that's caused these problems to begin with to go back and ensure that all the dogs are regularly walked and exercised? I'm talking about item ten. With no oversight or accountability for this department, this is nothing more than thoughts and prayers. They, they've already lied to you multiple times in PA meetings since July, since June, saying, oh, we're gonna make an app, oh, the dog walking app is gonna make sure that, I've checked in with volunteers at West Valley, no one's using the dog walking app, it's not in use, you would know that if you show up to the shelters in person, but you just said that you haven't set foot in a shelter since before the pandemic. How are you going to solve these problems from the top down when you're not talking to the actual volunteers, the actual people affected by them? I'm gonna move on to item three, which is about the volunteer programs, there's only one line in this entire motion that even vaguely mentions the discipline that these volunteers are, uh, have to deal with, yet you can hear from the calls today that like, they clearly have to deal with a, a, an extreme culture of retaliation. They have people calling in asking their friends to speak for them because they're scared of losing their position as what? As an unpaid volunteer, you need to step foot in these shelters and talk to these people in person because they will tell you a very different story from what Annette Ramirez will tell you when you're working with the people in this department. Lastly, you said in the LA Times, you have no ability to order the department to do anything. Yeah, it's not about ordering the department, it's about fostering relationships and putting pressure on people.
Would the caller with the last four digits, six, seven, four, two, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on? Once again...
Sorry, sorry, I, I was on my mute, I'm so sorry, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was on my phone mute, um, so my name is Vanessa Garcia, um, it's my first time calling to one of these meetings, I'm a little nervous, but, um, number four, um, it's talking about a orange list and I'm Googling and I can't even find that, so even...
Just quickly, um, uh, for the, the items on the agenda, um, can you tell me which items you'd like to speak on so I can...
Oh, so it was number four.
Just, only number four? Okay, um, so you'll have one minute to speak on item number four, um, and you can begin.
Okay, it's saying to utilize a orange list, um, so we could reach, you know, um, the shelters so that rescues can, um, help out with like vet care, but even like to pull out, um, dogs that are under euthanization, like middle list because of vet care or needing vet care, um, we have, at least with the rescue groups, that I don't even know how to get on the orange list, but, um, we're trying to reach these dogs and pull them out, but we're having a hard time reaching the shelters. We're first taking, um, transferred to three-one-one and then to the shelter and then we're waiting over like one to two hours and sometimes the calls drop. So just accessibility for rescues to get these, um, um, dogs in the euthanization list is, um, causing more dogs to die than needed and that's it, we need help.
Thank you for your comments. Would the caller with the last four digits, zero, seven, three, eight, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hi, um, my name is Tess Taylor, can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you, and which items would you like to speak on?
Thank you, item number three, centralizing the system and item number five, uh, once again...
You'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Thank you, sir, my name, once again, is Tess Taylor, I'm speaking on my own behalf as a person, but I also happen to be an elected neighborhood council member in the city of Los Angeles and a budget rep for my neighborhood council, I'm very concerned about budgeting, staffing and particularly about animals. As a, uh, rescue person myself, I have several dog rescues, I encourage everyone listening here today concerned about treatment of animals to contact me as soon as possible. My telephone number is eight, one, eight, eight, zero, six, nine, eight, four, four, and I will repeat my phone number in a moment so you can grab a pencil. I am interested in reviewing the staffing, budgeting and resources and helping to make recommendations about that, I will look forward to meeting with council member Coretts and potentially his committee as well as the LA Animal Services Department to try to bring into compliance some of the problems that are being discussed here today. I've been hearing very thoughtful comments from Tom Keesh, the longtime volunteer, Michelle Kelly, uh, Robert Kwan, who was cut off, I encourage all of you to contact me, please, Kathy Serge, Carolyn Ilya, uh, Gail Raff, especially Jeff Mousner, who takes a tremendous interest in animals. Um, I want to, uh, leave with my phone number, once again, it is eight, one, eight, eight, zero, six, nine, eight, four, four, and my telephone number is Tess Taylor. I look forward to working with everyone here to help save these wonderful animals who cannot speak for themselves and to correct some of these longstanding problems, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would the caller with the last four digits, six, two, five, six, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, my name's Diana and I'd like to speak on item number three and item number ten.
Great, uh, you'll have two minutes and you can begin.
Okay, um, for the volunteer program, um, for volunteers in general, listen to your volunteers when they're ta, telling you what needs to be done with the volunteer program and what's happening inside the volunteer program, um, they're here to improve the lives of animals and if you're sensitive to criticism, then you're in the wrong career, you should listen to and accept their criticism and be willing to work with them to fix the problems. The priority of the PA's committee, the personnel audits and animal welfare committee should be on animal welfare.
You're not on any of the topics.
I disagree that criticizing you is off-topic, Paul Coretts, you're the head of this committee.
Not one of the items, next caller, please. Um, once again, uh, if callers would like to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand. If any of the listeners in the queue one more time would like to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand. star nine to raise your hand. Okay, sir, there are no more callers with their hands raised, so I believe that completes public comment.
Thank you. So we will close up public comment and begin addressing the items. Item eleven again is continued, so let's begin with item one.
Item one, motion, Coretts Blumenfield, relative to reviewing the position of animal care technician.
Thank you, and questions for the department. Very briefly, what requirements are there for applicants for the animal care technician position?
Good morning. Curtis Watts with the Department of General Services Assistant General Manager. Today I'm joined by our Director of Shelter Operations, Jennifer Curio, and our Director of Budget and Finance and Accounting, Sharon Lee. So the requirements per the most recent job bulletin for animal care technician are one thousand and forty hours of experience paid to volunteer in the care or maintenance of companion animals, which must include dogs, cats, or rabbits, or the completion of three semester units or four quarter units from an accredited college or university in animal health or animal care.
And other categories of experience or personal qualities that could be added that might enhance the kind of applicants that you get?
There may be some additional educational and experience requirements we could require, but we believe that it would further limit and decrease the candidate pool for this classification, and we think it may be in our best interest to leave the requirements as they are and possibly implement or conduct trainings once employed that, you know, will increase behavioral assessment abilities and things of that nature.
So have you taken any steps yet to move in that direction? That that does seem logical. It would allow a reasonable number of people to come through without the experience, particularly with the TLH program, but we have to do extra training, otherwise, you know, our folks really won't be able to do the job as well as they can.
Yes, and we haven't implemented any of the trainings yet. We are considering the best route or the best methods to do that, to implement or institute some of those trainings, and we will hopefully be implementing or instituting those shortly or within the next few months.
Well, thank you, and I would like to approve the motion for item number one. Let's see, item number two.
Item two, motion, Coretts O'Farrell, relative to developing a program for the annual promotion of spay and neuter and the city's spay-neuter law.
So what tools the department have for enforcing spay and neuter requirements and how actively are we focused on them?
So when a dog is adopted at one of the city shelters, it has to be sterilized, and if an adopted animal is sent to a home unable to be sterilized due to health conditions, the department issues a form which we refer to as the D three hundred, and that states that the adopted animal has to be sterilized when it's healthy. And if the animal is not sterilized, the adopter forfeits their forty-dollar spay-neuter deposit. Animal control officers, when one of these forms is issued, they follow up within forty-five days as to whether or not the animal has been sterilized. And if an individual redeems their pet at the shelter, the redeemer has the option to sterilize their animal through the city's spay-neuter program, but if they choose not to, they'll pay for a hundred-dollar dog license and a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-dollar breeder's permit annually. And in addition to that, the department employs animal control officers, as you know, and animal license canvassers. Animal control officers conduct license enforcement whenever they are conducting an investigation and a dog is present, and the animal license canvassers canvas neighborhoods going door-to-door enforcing license requirements. One of the license requirements to qualify for a lower-cost license is proof of spay-neuter, and both animal control officers and animal license canvassers have the ability to issue spay-neuter vouchers and administrative citations, which come with a first penalty of a hundred dollars per violation, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a second violation, five-hundred for a third, and a thousand dollars for a fourth and any subsequent violations.
So I know we used to have a somewhat robust canvassing operation. How is that currently? I mean, is it robust enough to really cover the city or even anything close to it?
We would say no, we could do, we would definitely like to have an additional number of licensed animal canvassers present. We have six position authorities for animal license canvasser, and we currently have four of those vacancies filled.
So any other impediments other than the lack of canvassers that keeps us from enforcing the law adequately?
We think that the biggest impediment is the lack of staffing. If we had additional staffing, we would be able to be out in the community more enforcing this requirement in this law.
And I know every year statewide, nationally, locally, the animal welfare industry as a whole sponsors International Spay Day every spring as well as other special spay and neuter promotions. I've mentioned Spay Day a number of times in council, but I can only remember one occasion where we made a truly big deal of it, bringing mobile spay and neuter vans to City Hall, doing a council ceremony around it. What would it take for the department to make such efforts a regular occurrence and to address this more aggressively?
So during the first year of the pandemic, most mobile spay and neuter operators weren't operating, and one of the operators resumed services in the fall of twenty twenty, but to limited numbers. The department currently has three letters of agreement and will be executing two contracts with mobile spay and neuter operators soon. The department always does a press release educating the public about spay-neuter and the resources available, including how to obtain spay-neuter vouchers for National Spay Day in February. And to keep attention on the topic, the department also began L.A. Spay Day in May, starting in twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-two, the department also partnered with the Annenberg's Pet Space to fundraise for a spay-neuter voucher program with a matching grant.
So I think we could certainly do a lot more publicity around this and do more spay and neuter days, events at a particular location as we do with the animal adoption. So can you come back to this committee at its first December meeting with a game plan for a spay and neuter promotion in twenty twenty-three?
We will, yes, definitely.
I would appreciate that, and we will approve this motion as well. Citywide volunteer program. This has been an area that has generated considerable controversy for my time on council and long before that. I know that under Mayor V. Ragosa, all departmental volunteer programs had to register their volunteers with the citywide volunteer program for liability and other reasons. Would the department be willing to share some administrative aspects of its program with a citywide program to establish some consistency?
Absolutely. So the current volunteer coordinator does work with the mayor's office regularly to share processes and their regarding the volunteers section, and if a program such as a citywide volunteer program was implemented, we would be happy to participate.
And certainly a citywide database of all volunteers would be, you know, the most basic thing to start with. Recent controversies and controversies that have popped up over the years and long before I got here suggest that there are deficiencies in the way that the department handles volunteer suspensions, appeals, and dismissals. Would you be willing to submit the appeals process to an independent mediation process?
We would, but the department works already, works closely with the Personnel Department and City Attorney to review personnel-related issues with the volunteer program, and while we would prefer that the program and all of its decisions remain with the department's oversight, we would be open to considering any recommendations that the council or the mayor's office has in that regard.
Yeah, I would have to say at a minimum, gently, not good enough. This has been somewhat disastrous. There are a lot of unhappy volunteers out there. Part of it is clearly the requirements that we have for volunteers incoming. We definitely need to revisit the requirements about talking to the media, and clearly this, our requirements generate a lot of the problems. I don't know if it's number one, many of the volunteers don't seem to be aware that there are requirements regarding talking to media. So they expose something in the department, they immediately are fired or suspended. This seems to be a problematic constraint, so I would hope we would look with the city attorney at what we legally can be doing and what we should be doing and how we can better handle this. So having said that, I would like to move forward with item number three as well. Item number four.
Item four. Item four, motion, Coretts O'Farrell, relative to fully utilizing the orange list to be sure that organizations and individuals who would like to, who would be willing to cover the costs of expensive vet care are always notified and given the opportunity to save the lives of those sick and injured animals.
And how often does the department update the orange list and exactly who gets to see it? And why is the department not consistently shared the orange list with a wide audience of everyone that would be willing to help with an animal who has expensive healthcare injuries and situations but would be willing to, to, to take care of them, to make sure their healthcare was provided, rather than just leave it to a staff person to decide?
So it's my understanding that the orange list is updated and sent out to our New Hope Partners three times a day, and the orange list is a communication that isn't typically shared with the public, but it's a list, a means of communication between the department and our registered New Hope Partners who wish to receive the list, and animals on the orange list are offered to our New Hope Partners at a discounted rate. Other than that, all of our animals are listed online and available for adoption from anyone and member of the public.
And how's the Good Samaritan program work? And do people who have volunteered to be Good Samaritans always get notified of every orange-listed animal?
So the Good Samaritan program is a foster program which allows a person to foster an unavailable medical, medically impacted animal and pay for the cost of the medical care the animal needs prior to it being available for adoption, and they get first rights to adopt the animal once it's available for adoption. The orange list is to notify our New Hope Partners that certain animals are being offered to them at a discounted price.
So is there any reason why we couldn't expand that to Good Samaritans as well?
I, I'm not certain. We will discuss it and report back on whether or not that can be an option.
Yeah, I think it absolutely should be and really has to be. There's no reason why we wouldn't give these animals every opportunity to survive. Is there any other way the department can make sure these animals get every chance they deserve to receive needed veterinary care?
So creating the orange alert for our New Hope Partners was the department's way of ensuring our partners know which animals are in medical need and was a program that was recently implemented to ensure additional visibility of these animals. That's the main, the main method we have at present with the department.
Well, I'd certainly encourage you to add a list of Good Samaritans that would be willing and able to save these animals' lives once they arrive on the orange list, and I've asked that we approve item number four. Item number five.
Item five, motion, Coretts Blumenfield, relative to funding necessary to optimally run the Department of Animal Services to include funding for all seven city-owned shelters and funding and staffing for a citywide cat program and an enhanced spay and neuter program.
And the general problem of underfunding is one that probably has existed as long as the department. The biggest problem is sort of the city hall culture, which is if you're a general manager, from my point of view, you have to be a team player, and so the mayor gives you a budget and you can't really let it, let anyone know that you're dramatically underfunded. So for years I would meet with the general manager and I'd have a sense of certain programs that I knew were underfunded, and it was like pulling teeth. The general manager would always say, well, you know, we'll make it through, we'll be okay, we know how to manage it, but in reality, it wasn't the case. There was severe underfunding, and when I was on budget committee, I would poke and prod the general manager and say, well, give me a few of the key positions that would be most valuable to have you restore, and I would always restore them in the process. Now, along with every other problem we've had from particularly around COVID and around our tremendous budget shortage where we incentivized early retirements, we also had the fact that I wasn't on budget committee anymore, so I couldn't even identify a few positions a year in the last two or three years to fill that in. The big difference and really the dramatic information was that in one of our two hearings that we held, the interim general manager admitted we had enough funds to run four of the shelters, not super well, but adequately, and we have, depending on how you look at it, six shelters, seven shelters, eight shelters. We have the space for eight. So I mean, very roughly, you do the math to run adequately, not well, but adequately, we should have twice the funding for this department that it has. And so that is finally out there on the record, and that makes a huge difference. Now, everything I've heard over the last few months reinforces the reality that the department is underfunded, and this flows through all the issues that we've heard about, although once again dramatically exacerbated lots of people out at any one time with COVID. What's the status of your effort to get some additional mid-year funding and a bigger budget for twenty-three, twenty-four?
So the department has reviewed your motion requesting what it would, or asking what it would take for the department to successfully operate seven shelters. The department is in the process of responding to that motion with a report back, and in that motion, in that report back, we will include all of the department's asks that we plan to submit for this, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The department also submits a regular financial status report to the CAO's office, and as part of that report, the department requests additional funding as needed. At present, we are asking for funding to cover our overtime costs that are, you know, far exceeding the budget that we did receive for that line item. And also as part of the budget request process, the department is preparing its twenty-three, twenty-four budget request as we speak, and we'll be submitted, submitting it by the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two deadline.
Right, I don't know how much this will affect the department's endemic problem of having to ask for less than it needs. So I know you work with the mayor's office, you know what the mayor's office wants to provide, and then you try to fit within that box. That really doesn't work. That's kind of what's gotten us into this situation. I've heard that the shelters run low on food for the animals at various times and that the shelter's budget for food is already extinguished, so money to pay for just feeding the animals is coming from other budget items. What do you do to rectify that situation? It's hard for me to believe that we have not been able to budget even half of what we need to actually feed the animals, which is probably the very most basic thing that we do in the shelters.
And like you said, this year our budget for that, our food supply line item was cut, so we've had to try and find ways to move, you know, things around to try and cover those costs, and the department works regularly. And the department works regularly and monitors food supplies that all our shelter locations remain fully stocked. And the department works with the Department of General Services for food supply as General Services manages the food contract. And the department works closely with G S D procurement and managers of the G S D warehouses to ensure that sufficient food supply is maintained. And if, you know, the, the supplies become a dire situation, we will also ultimately have to use the Animal Welfare Trust Fund to make sure that the animals are fed, what, what they're needed to be fed on as frequently as they need to be fed.
So technically is the Animal Welfare Trust Fund allowed to be used for food? Or personnel or spay and neuter? What does that trust fund really set up for?
It's not allowed to be used for spay and neuter, nor is it allowed to be used for personnel. But it is allowed to be used for any, you know, any items or anything that directly impacts or will benefit animals. It will als- it also is able to be used for capital improvement and equipment that's needed to make sure that the animals are best taken care of. And then there are times where there are certain donations or grants that go to the Animal Welfare Trust Fund will have specific requirements or contingencies that we must adhere to, to utilize those ones.
Yeah, and my motion asks for an additional $3 million in mid-year funding to supplement the spay and neuter trust fund and to supplement your staffing and shelter food budgets. If this funding were to become available during this fiscal year, would you be able to use it in a timely manner?
We would. And so the department did receive the entire amount we requested as for the spay neuter program, which was over $2.5 million and we have a potential access to over a million dollars for the citywide cat program. However, there are other possible needs, like you were saying, in terms of staffing, we are well over budget in terms of our overtime. And that's due to like staff shortages as, you know, due to COVID, COVID exposure. We would also utilize it for the reduced food budget and, you know, spay neuter as well and any other capital improvement or equipment needs that we may have throughout the year. But we would make good use of the funding if we receive it.
Great. So I'd like to approve motion number five as well. Animal cruelty task force, I believe is the next one.
Item six, motion Corretz Blumenfield relative to establishing a plan for reinvigorating the animal cruelty task force.
So how many cases were generated in the last year that, that L A P V still participated in the task force? Compared to what you've been able to do since the task force was halted?
So sir, that I don't know because the, all of the, the cases are now shifted. The responsibility rests with the 21 geographic areas. They conduct their own filings, if they do, and their own investigations and they file directly with the city attorney's office, the animal cruelty unit. I can get back to you with the exact number of cases that were done collectively by all 21 areas, if you choose.
Okay, that would be helpful. For animal services, in what ways do you think L A P V involvement enhances your efforts to combat animal cruelty?
So I, I know that they, you know, we, we still maintain the, the D three coordinator of the Animal Cruelty Task Force. That detective is still housed here out of the detective bureau. They, she works with the 21 geographic areas. She's still, from time to time, provides her experience, expertise and case assistance when requested and when necessary. And ultimately, the, the geographic bureaus, as well as the slows and the areas work to that end to make that an issue in the areas. I'm not sure exactly how much of an issue we are dealing with. An immense load of violent crime right now and major part one crimes. But I know that I am the comp stat coordinator. We do talk about that from time to time. It comes up on the areas during the inspections. And it is something that they do do in the, the geographic areas throughout and across the city.
And early in the pandemic, L A P dismantled all of its special task forces to the dismay of many. Have any of them been reconstituted since funding for sworn staff has been somewhat restored?
So, so when you look at it, the majority of those task forces and, and the units that were, that were dismantled came out of Detective Bureau. And because of the managed attrition due to the, the, the major issues and the sworn deployment declining sworn deployment numbers, we have lost about 200 lieutenants, detectives, sergeants and police officers across the board, most of which came out of those units. And so what we have lost is a sexual assault unit, the pawn shop detail. We've lost the burglary theft cargo hijack detail. We lost the cold case homicide unit, although we're slowly reestablishing that. We have lost the human trafficking unit, the major metal theft investigative detail across the city and also the animal cruelty task force. With the exception right now of the sexual assault unit and the cold case units, the sexual assault unit was reconstituted and it was pushed out to each of the four geographic bureaus. So the divisions had the options to either establish a bureau unit or keep their own sexual assault unit tables. And that's what they do across the city. So although we didn't lose the ability to investigate sexual assaults, we are somewhat hampered a bit by connecting as the sexual assault unit was out of robbery homicide division. They ultimately were able to pick up on the major citywide trends and issues a lot quicker. But we do have all of the sexual assault units reestablished within the four geographic bureaus. And then the last is the cold case homicide unit out of robbery homicide. We have started to reconstitute that, although we need more bodies. The other units have not been reestablished as of yet based on the fact that we do not simply have the bodies to do so.
So the council approved a million dollars to recharge L A P D's participation in the animal cruelty task force without taking away from other assignments. Why didn't L A P D use any of those funds rather than just return them to the general fund?
Well, sir, once again, we, we don't have the bodies. We are down nearly 900 bodies across the, the department. What the chief is doing is he is taking the bodies out of specialized divisions. He is filling the radio cars and as the comp stat coordinator, I can tell you across the city, the divisions are having difficulties in meeting their minimums. And that means they are having problems staffing the basic response cars on all of the watches across the city, not to mention filling the detective vacancies that are out in the 21 geographic areas that are required to investigate those crimes. But even further than that, sir, one of the considerations we took into to focus when we were here over at Detective Bureau is, for, for instance, M E U, the mental evaluation unit. We clearly have to deploy units out in the field to handle those with mental crises. And so right now, we're, we're supposed to be deploying 17 to 21 units a day. Because of our reduced deployment and inability to get bodies, we are only deploying 10 to 12 units. We are way down there on a critical area that we need to, to basically address. In juvenile division, for example, you know, we have, we have numerous detective needs that we can't fill in order to investigate the abused child crimes that are going on out there, not to mention the 30,000 suspected child abuse reports that go on citywide. Our people and the lack thereof are responsible for triaging those, reviewing those, assigning those out and then ultimately participating in the investigation and criminal filings of the major issues. And as you can see with 30,000 of those a year with a, a reduced amount of detectives, that is being, that is very problematic. And staying in juvenile division, we also have the ICAC unit, Internet Crimes Against Children's, where we are dropping literally hundreds of tips that we can't act on every month that involve child sexual abuse material and ultimately cases that need to be worked because of the lack of detectives that are in that division. We can't keep up with the workload. And now you move over to the, the recent United States Supreme Court decision for the C C Ws or carrying concealed weapons licenses that are now being required to be issued by every city and county. We are now at over a thousand backlog C C Ws. And because of that, I had to collapse a fugitive warrant section that had the responsibility of picking up high-risk misdemeanor and low-grade felony warrant suspects and collapse them and put them into that C C W unit because we are legally obligated as a city and a department to review these in a timely manner and get these out and going. So we've got a ton of obligations and as you know, sir, I have had to pull people out of the field even more because of the follow-up, follow-home robbery task force, which now has over 350 incidents that I have had to pull people from throughout the city and throughout the bureau to backfill and create a task force to deal with that. And as well as, we have another major task force, which is the rail cargo theft task force, which is in the tens of millions of dollars in losses where the trains are getting broken into by individuals from the, from the port of L A all the way up to the top of East L A, Hollandbeck Division. We have put together a task force there, once again, taking people out of their current assignments and jobs to address these pressing crime issues. So.
I, I, I get the idea. Has the department ever looked at the fact that a, a lot of folks that commit the kinds of crimes against children and other, other cruelty issues often start with crimes against animals first?
Yes.
Least resistant. So if we were to reestablish a more vigorous animal cruelty task force, we might be nipping some of these cases in the bud and getting people help at an earlier stage in, in their lives.
That, that's correct. That is a, that is one of the known factors from the juvenile division detectives. They do know that. That is one of the stepping stones, if you will, to juvenile crimes as well as potentially other, you know, issues and violent crimes. However, as you've seen, and I can keep going, that taking.
We get it.
Yeah, taking bodies out of these assignments. I'm having to backfill all of these violent major crimes right now to, I, I just, I've got so many priorities that I have to fill in the hundreds that it is very difficult for me to find. What we used to have was about seven bodies that constituted the, the abused, the, the animal abuse task force. So it, very difficult at this point. Yes, we would like to. I have spoken with the chief of police. You know, when the opportunity permits and resources permit, that will be something that we will consider reinstituting here along with others. However, at this point in time, in, in my discussion with the chiefs and with the assistant chiefs is not, not resource permitting, sir.
We will take that into account, but I would still ask that we approve the motion on item number six. And thank you for your, your testimony. Item number seven.
Item seven, motion Corretz Blumenfield relative to the Department of Animal Services program to incorporate targeted local hire trainees.
If you're reading something.
Excuse me. Excuse me there. Motion Corretz Blumenfield relative to the Department of Animal Services program to incorporate targeted local hire trainees into its shelter operations.
So what steps does the department take to integrate T L H hires into the staff?
So once they're hired, they're pretty much treated just like other, other people that were hired otherwise. They are trained, they go through the training process and they are given assignments and they are treated just like staff hired through the civil service system.
Well, we, we definitely heard testimony otherwise in our two hearings and that some T L H hires feel like they weren't completely trained and are somewhat thrown in on the deep end. And also that they're not well-mentored, they're not necessarily given meaningful tasks to do. And they're generally treated as lesser hires than some of the others. How can we try and improve that? And if there are interpersonal problems between regular staff and T L H hires, how can we have the department resolve them in a, in a more effective way?
Yeah, that is unfortunate that people are experiencing that and that is not how obviously that's not how that should, that should happen for them. We will have, we will continue to monitor that situation. Supervisors should be intervening whenever they witness that or, you know, have someone come, come to them saying that that's their experience. And we will definitely work with personnel to make sure that, you know, there is an open door and a, an opportunity for those candidates or those employees to be able to explain what they're experiencing and the department will, the department will address it immediately.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to hope that we'd be more proactive than just waiting for them to complain to personnel. So I, I would encourage the department to do extra mentoring for the T L H hires and be sure that they are treated well and appropriately as everyone else. Obviously, the department isn't out to have them mistreated. There's no question. We, we want folks, particularly those that, that have been hard to hire in the past to, to fit in and work well in every department. And many of the departments have found these are their best hires and that they're highly motivated and grateful for actually getting a job and, and a notable one that isn't always easy for them to obtain. So we want to do everything we can to make sure this works out for them and for the department. So if, if some folks aren't treating them and aren't, aren't giving them the proper attitude of respect that they should, like every other employee, we, we want to put extra attention to this and make sure that's not happening. So I appreciate, I appreciate the department's willingness to look at this actively and would recommend item number seven be passed as well. Item number eight.
Item eight, motion Corretz Blumenfield relative to ensuring the best possible treatment of cats, rabbits and all other small animals by both staff and volunteers during their stays at city animal shelters.
And starting with cats, I'd say community cat rooms were provided most or all of the current generation of shelters. Yet at times these rooms are used for storage, not for cats to socialize and be seen by potential adopters. What would it take to better utilize the community cat rooms? Because it's especially important. I mean, the, the behavior of cats when they're stuck crouching in a small cage is, is quite different from that when they're able to spend time in the community cat room, interact with other cats, interact hopefully with, you know, a volunteer or a shelter employee that is willing to hang out and play with them. It's, it's very different. And so some cats may not thrive in a little cage, might not seem as adoptable. So this would make a significant difference. What can we do to better utilize these community cat rooms?
So our cats are provided with bedding, hiding spots, and we also allow volunteers to provide enrichment with petting and treats. We can increase the level of volunteer interaction. And Jennifer, you can jump in if you, if you feel so inclined as to what else we can possibly do to help these cats or to provide additional enrichment for the cats. Go ahead, go ahead.
So at East Valley, West, North Central and West L A, all of their community cat rooms are currently being used as community cat rooms. At Chesterfield Square, that room is being used for storage, but we're in the process of moving everything out so we can utilize that as a community cat room. And also at the Harbor, because they have such a high volume of cats, the community cat room has portable cages where it's, it's being used to, to house the cats. So once their population goes down just a little bit, then we'll go ahead and utilize it back to a community cat room.
And also, I, the last time I visited a shelter, which was a few weeks ago, I noticed that there was a community cat room that was perfectly capable of being operated by a volunteer. I noticed that there was a community cat room that was perfectly capable of, uh, being operated by a volunteer, but there weren't many volunteers. Now, I don't know how much of a problem that is that, uh, it's difficult to get volunteers during the day. But is there a way for us to, uh, in- increase that focus so that community cat rooms, as well as many other things, but community cat rooms could be utilized during the day with, with volunteers doing en- enrichment and, uh, and socialization?
As of right now, we have volunteer shifts that are open ju- just directly for the community cat rooms. So I can double-check with the signups and see how, how the response is with the, with the open shifts. And maybe we can, we can open it some more.
Yeah, whatever you can do in, in that arena, I think it's, uh, it's a great opportunity to make the cats more adoptable. And, uh, and, uh, not only have better lives while they're in the shelter, but be more likely to be adopted out quickly if they're, uh, if behave in, in a more outgoing way, which is much more likely when they're socialized. Uh, are there other cat-centric efforts made to promote adoptions? I know we have, uh, a lot of, uh, adoption days for dogs or mostly for dogs. Are there, uh, unusual efforts made to promote cat adoption as well?
Uh, the department does promote, uh, cat adoptions as fee-waive for the past several years, um, and that's due to a grant from the ASPCA, and cats are promoted in every dog adoption campaign as well.
Are there cat-specific things that can be done as well to promote cats? I know the fee waiver helps in terms of, of, uh, the financial element, but just in terms of publicizing the number of cats that we have available?
We can, we can work with our, uh, our, our Public Information Officer and get the word out that we have, uh, uh, overpopulation of cats and that we need for folks that are interested in cats to come in and adopt. We can do a special, special advertisement or campaign to, to let that information be known.
That would be great and important. As far as the rabbits and other small mammals, the complaint has been that their rooms at the shelters don't receive sufficient attention, that they don't receive much socialization. Is that true and what, what would be the explanation for it?
So it's my understanding that a lot of that work is done during graveyard shift, which is midnight to eight AM and is not visible to the public or volunteers. And that's pretty much why they may not see that those animals are tended to uh, as much as some other animals during the daytime. It's because those, those assignments are, uh, given to our graveyard staff.
Do they get any socialization? As I would imagine, you know, in graveyard, you're probably lucky just to feed everybody and do the basics that, uh, needs to be done.
Jennifer, do you have any information on any socialization that those animals receive?
I don't think it, I don't think socialization is done at those hours. That's done more during the day, but the cleaning and the caring is done during grave shift.
So is any socialization going on with these animals?
Not during grave shift, no, but during the day with, with staff and the volunteers that sign up for the pocket pets, yes, that's when the socialization, socialization is done.
Do we have many volunteers that do this? And do we, uh, make any effort to specially recruit volunteers that have that interest?
There's, there's a high number of volunteers that we have that are specifically for the rabbits and the small mammals. And, and again, there's, there's volunteer shifts open every day for people to, to enrich those, those animals.
And is there anything that can be done more to, uh, promote adoptions? I don't think I've ever seen a, adopt a hamster day or, uh, uh, focus on, on adopting rabbits.
Uh, there are some regular campaigns to promote the adoption and care of small mammals and to educate the public that the shelter has these species and highlight them. But we'll continue to do or create efforts to educate the public and promote the adoption of these animals.
Yeah, I've never seen anything, for instance, for hamsters or guinea pigs. I mean, I, I might not be, uh, on the, the most extreme list, but, uh, I've literally never seen anything. I, I did see, uh, one rabbit included among the list of, uh, animals for adoption and included that in my newsletter, but it's, it's definitely a rarity. All right, well, I would, uh, recommend approval of item number eight as well. Uh, item number nine.
Item nine, motion, Coretts Blumenfield, relative to utilizing a joint labor management committee fully is, make sure is fully and regularly operational to enhance Department of Animal Services performance.
And I wonder if you could tell us just for a moment how a joint labor management committee works and how often a department convenes its, its joint labor management committee? And when was the last time it was convened? Just give an overall idea of all that.
So our joint label met, joint labor management committee meeting, uh, convenes quarterly, and it consists of executive management, a, a, a number of supervisors, uh, labor representatives, union reps, and, uh, staff from various classifications. And we get together to discuss any issues that staff may have and, uh, how we can address it, how, uh, the management, uh, attempts to address it and how we can move forward in the future to work together better. The, the, the meetings are very helpful. They're very informative. Management is able to learn a lot of the issues that staff are dealing with and how it impacts morale and how they're dealing with certain issues. And, um, we do our best to try and provide responses and answers, and we meet regularly to make sure that we're following up and being accountable for what we're learning.
So is the way that, there a way that you could meet more regularly and, uh, make more use of the committee?
We have had conversations about increasing the frequency with which we meet. However, um, we've determined that there isn't a need to, like, move the, the frequency to monthly. There just isn't that much time for, I mean, being short-staffed, there isn't that much time for us to meet that regularly. So we, we've kept them quarterly for now, but we do continue to have those conversations to see if there is a need to increase those meetings.
And do you see benefits involved in involving staff and identifying problems and solutions through these, this committee?
Oh, absolutely. Um, I think it, it brings awareness to some issues that, um, you know, executive management and some supervisors aren't privy to before hearing them in the meetings. And, uh, it, it also helps staff understand, you know, some of our considerations in making with this, the decisions we make and how certain other elements that they're not necessarily, uh, you know, informed about in terms of budgeting, uh, personnel rules and, and restrictions that, you know, would impact us being able to to address some of the issues that they bring up. So it, it works both ways, and we're both, we're, all parties are able to learn about the other parties and what they're dealing with.
And, and I'd certainly encourage you to, uh, meet more frankly, frequently, even if it's bimonthly rather than monthly. Um, I think that would be an improvement and, uh, labor management communication, I think is, is certainly valuable enough to do that. And, uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, approve, uh, item number nine as well. Item number ten.
Item ten, motion, Coretts O'Farrell, relative to planning to ensure that all dogs in the shelters are regularly exercised and properly attended to.
And what has been the recent program for exercising and providing enrichment for shelter dogs? And what role did the pandemic play in us, uh, not providing as much as we should have been?
So it's my understanding that prior to the pandemic, the department was implementing playgroups at several of the shelters and something called boredom busters at each shelter location. So the playgroups allow dogs to socialize with one another and engage in natural behavior out of the kennel. And boredom busters provides mental stimulation for the dogs while in the kennel. When the pandemic hit, both programs halted during the time period that volunteers didn't have access to the shelters. And then the department started boredom busters back up, which was staff-led. Once the volunteers were permitted back into the facilities, both programs were started back up with limitations as we still had to socially distance, which made playgroups challenging. And most recently, the department partnered with the Annenberg Pet Space, who funded Dogs Playing for Life, to hire two canine enrichment coordinators to work with the department five days a week. And one canine enrichment coordinator started on September first, and the second one is in the hiring process.
So, uh, is there a reason why there's only two?
Uh, that's probably what the Annenberg Pet Space was able to fund for us at this time.
Okay, well, we haven't seen how, how the program works. It, it certainly would be helpful to have two rather than zero. So that's, uh, that's something I'd look forward to. One of the popular and most efficient centerpieces, of course, has been the playgroups. What's kept the department from making them a standard part of every day at the shelters?
Uh, so prior to the pandemic, playgroup to run every day by staff. And since the pandemic, we haven't had sufficient staff, uh, to be able to run the groups regularly. But once we are at optimal staffing levels, we can go back to running them regularly. Playgroups take a minimum of four to five people, two are in the yard with each other at all times, supervising ten-plus dogs. And two to three additional persons are needed to bring dogs to and from the yard and their kennels. And as we were discussing what it would take to successfully operate seven shelters, we are requesting positions that will specifically be, you know, dedicated to running these playgroups on a regular daily basis.
And what steps are being taken to address the weaknesses in the walking and exercise programs? And one of the things that sounded the most promising was the dog walk, walking app, although we're hearing that it's not really being implemented. So, uh, what, what are your thoughts on that?
So the department worked with the mayor's team to generate a tracking system for the outer kennel enrichment, which wasn't, uh, which wasn't tracked previously, even though it was being provided. And by tracking the enrichment, we can also identify which animals are in the most need of enrichment to be able to better focus on staff and volunteer efforts. And as far as I understood, this, the app is being used regularly. There's a number of instances and information being included or put into the app about, you know, the enrichment that various animals are receiving. Jennifer, do you have any more information on how much or how well the, the app is being utilized?
It's being utilized. I, I run reports on a daily for, um, Dogs Playing for Life just so we can make sure that all the information is being accurately, accurately put in chameleon. So, I mean, I know right now our focus is really South LA, so we can make sure that all the notes are being put in, but the, the notes, I mean, it's, it's, it's better than what it was prior to us not having the app. So it's, it's working. There's still a couple of things we need, we need to figure out where we do need to make sure everybody, regardless if it's staff or volunteers, are utilizing and putting in the notes, but it's, I, I think it's working pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, it, it ideally is set up that way, but if people aren't implementing it, uh, you know, it's, it defeats the process. So we need to figure out some level of accountability. So everybody that's actually walking the dogs, uh, has to participate in that program. Otherwise, uh, we're, we will be assuming that dogs aren't getting walked when they have been walked, which would, would, uh, probably not spread our, our, uh, our dog walking, you know, adequately across the board and lead to inaccurate numbers. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on what we can do to make sure everyone participates, but there's got to be some accountability.
Ahmed, I think that the most we can do is make sure that everyone that is participating in these enrichment activities is actually in, in, in putting their information in their notes and, and really enforcing that, that part of the program is being, you know, implemented and people are doing what they're supposed to do. We'll continue to monitor it and making sure that the app is being utilized to its fullest capacity.
And if someone isn't using it, it might be because they don't understand it. So I guess we have to make sure that everybody's adequately trained on its use.
Oh, yeah, we'll continue to train and make sure that everyone is aware of its existence and how it's used.
And, and I think the problem that, uh, got the most attention and outrage was the idea that evidence dogs have sometimes gone months without being walked, which I think, uh, the general public, and certainly I would agree, is outrageous. So the department was sort of put on notice about this a couple of months ago. Uh, so what have we done to address it?
So recently, the department has adjusted its policy and procedures for walking or, or enriching evidence animals. And at present, evidence animals can be walked by volunteers and are being walked by volunteers. You know, it just, it just, we need to make sure that the level of supervision and authorization is in place before they're able to. But at present, they are able to do so following the procedures that the general manager placed.
And I don't know if there are, uh, dogs that are dangerous enough that neither volunteers nor staff want to walk them. But if we're in that situation, uh, can we hire an outside vendor to, uh, provide walks to, to the dogs that we might consider the most dangerous?
Yes, and believe that you have offered a considerable amount of funding for us to be able to consider and, uh, go out to bid to hire some people or, uh, an agency or organization that is able to walk dogs that have these sort of behavioral issues. And we are working on the RFP or bid to, bid to make sure that we are able to get those people in place to be able to walk those hard-to, to handle dogs.
Great, and we hope, uh, that they can also help with, uh, training and behavioral help and maybe get some of those dogs out of that circumstance where they're, they're so dangerous that people are afraid to walk them. But one way or another, we can make sure that every dog in our system gets a walk. It's the, uh, the fact that there had been dogs that hadn't been walked for months, I think was a shock to everyone, myself included. People said that I was aware of it. I, I had not heard ever from a credible source that that was the case until, uh, the LA Times turned it up, and we looked into it, into it more closely. And indeed, uh, it turned out to be the case. We can't ever let that happen again.
Agreed.
I, I appreciate your addressing this as aggressively as possible and would, uh, pass recommendation number, item number ten as well, as recommended. Is there anything else on our agenda before us?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, that clears the desk.
In that case, we are adjourned.